Hi, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. For roll call, I'll ask everyone to identify themselves for the record as I call your name. Todd Ferrante.
President.
John Andes.
President.
Bill Buchanan.
President.
Bill Gordy.
President.
Nate Passwaters is absent. Don... Donald Snack. And Elena McComas is here. We have a quorum. First, can I have a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Bill Gordy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Motion to enter into closed session. We will need a motion to approve closed session minutes from the previous month, Section 3305b 1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 3305b 9 is to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Show move, Bill Gordy.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Todd Ferrante.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move into closed session.
Welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order to reconvene in open session. As we reconvene, I want to note that we still have a quorum. Now to start our meeting, I need to have a motion from board to approve the addition of our closed meeting agenda for item 2.3, consult with legal counsel because our agenda was amended. So can I have a motion?
John Andy, so moved.
Thank you.
Second Bill Gordy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Closed session meeting was held today pursuant to general provisions, Article 3, 305B of the Annotated Code of Maryland, to discuss personnel matters, to approve previous closed session minutes, to consult with legal counsel, and to discuss matters related to negotiations. In personnel matters, a motion was made by Donald Smack and seconded by Todd Ferrante to amend the superintendent's contract. Okay, today, we welcome Pastor Woody Wilson from Stevenson United Methodist Church in Berlin who will give our invocation. Thank you, sir.
First let me thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and the board for allowing me to prove this being here with you today. Would you join me in prayer? Good and merciful God, we thank you for the blessed opportunity to facilitate your mission as the board, as educators, and administrators. We humbly beseech you to share with us the knowledge and the wisdom you bestowed upon Solomon, so we may guide and nurture each precious school with a faith-based growth. We strengthen this board to make appropriate heartfelt decisions that are beneficial to the mission of education. Let us all emulate you as we share our love generously for the development of relationships and good citizenship, that our duties be performed with enthusiasm and great zeal. Please bless all of our students, the very lifeblood of our future. Help them to learn and experience and grasp the appropriate toolsets needed to succeed in their lives and to further thy kingdom come here on earth as it is in heaven. And Father, during this Advent season, strengthen all of us, encourage us to lay down our schedules, to pause and remember your first coming as we yearn for your return. May our hearts enable us to find you, and may we be empowered by the Holy Spirit to perform our tasks today. All this we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We now move on to our next item, which is approval of session minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the open session board minutes from November 15th and December 6, 2022? Thank you, sir. A second?
Second Bill Buchanan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. We now move on to our superintendent's report. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mrs. McComas. And I can't believe that tomorrow's early dismissal kicks off the winter break, and for those who celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas for our students. I love this time of year, and I know it is always a joyous time of year for our students, staff, and our families. It's also the time of year when our students really shine in performing arts events all across our county. The leadership team and I have been crisscrossing the county to attend as many of these fantastic performances and concerts as possible, and at each one, we have been continually impressed by the talents of our students. From Stephen Kater's Children's Theater, which got back to its time-honored tradition of hosting thousands of children across our region, not just here in Worcester, to the elementary choral concerts of our youngest students, it's easy to see why Worcester County is a destination for arts enthusiasts. While I can go on and on about the remarkable performances of our students, whether it is in the classroom, on the court, field, or stage, I think that during the season of giving, we should take a moment to look at, on a lesser note, work that is going on at all our schools and offices, and that our efforts in charitable giving is absolutely remarkable. Our schools over the past months have participated in food, coat, toy, and even pajama drives to benefit charitable organizations and other fundraisers that have been taking place to benefit local families in need. As many of you know by now, our Giving Tuesday, which follows Thanksgiving holiday, is a big charitable campaign within our school system community, which donations directly go to the Worcester County Education Foundation, as well as a number of worthy local nonprofits and charities. I'm happy to say that the Education Foundation was able to raise an incredible $10,870 from 194 individual donors, and this generosity also secured a $1,000 prize that day, and coupled with an anonymous $10,000 match. The total raised for our Ed Foundation this year was $21,870. That is remarkable, ladies and gentlemen. All of these acts of charity are not only a reflection of the giving spirit of our faculty and staff, but also another means by which to model good citizenship for all our students. Giving back, whether through donations or volunteerism, is an essential part of being a part of a community, and I am glad to see how Worcester County Public Schools is setting the example. I would also like to tell you that I receive many emails and phone calls from folks who strongly support our school system, and we should be happy and joyous this holiday season for that. Lastly, I would like to close my remarks by wishing everyone a joyous holiday season. During the season, I hope you all will take the moment to reflect on the many blessings in your life as you spend time with family and friends, and think about ways that can help those not quite as fortunate as many of us. Again, I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas if you celebrate it, and to all, I wish you a safe, healthy, and happy holiday, and an enjoyable winter break. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. McComas.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to now move on to our student representatives. Thank you for being here. You guys are awesome, and we so appreciate the fact that you take time to come and report and be here for us. So thank you. We're going to start today with Snow Hill High School. Dinesh?
I will be reading from Worcester Technical High School report first.
Okay.
The summer has been a string of busy month at Worcester Tech. The spirit of giving has just been amazing. Our newly formed Health Professionals Organization, HOSA, ran a three-week canned food drive, and the response by both students and staff has been tremendous. Our Teacher Academy students are leading a winter hat and mittens collection drive to help out Cedar Chapel students who might be in need. Our Skills USA Our Skills USA organization has adopted three families at Christmas to hopefully brighten their holiday. Our staff has been participating in a 12-day-of-Christmas event, where each day they receive something special. On two of the days, however, they were asked to give back. Our staff collected Toys for the Toys for Tots Drive, and also collected and donated dog and cat food to the local animal shelter. We'd like to congratulate Ms. Valerie Zenti and Ms. Mary Miller, as both ladies were recognized as Hertrick Cash for Class winners. They received a combined $1,700 to use on supplies for their students in engineering and computer science. As the calendar turns to 2023, our culinary and automotive programs will be going through the accreditation process. We are excited for visitors to come and see and evaluate these great programs. On January 11, we'll once again be able to hold our STEM night in person. This is a night where interested eighth graders and their parents can come and hear about some exciting pathways that these future high schoolers can take. Lastly, we would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. Now, onto the Snow Hill High School. Happy December, everyone. Congratulations to our Snow Hill High School band, majorettes, and JRTC on a great parade season. Our band received two first-place ratings, and JRTC received three first-place ratings. PSAT scores have been released, and the counseling office has begun discussing results with sophomores and a select few juniors to summarize their current achievement levels and encourage net steps to increase college and career readiness. On December 13, representatives from Worcester County's Adolescent Clubhouse, Club Fear, Face Everything in Rise, presented to the freshman class assembly style about their offerings. The Adolescent Clubhouse is a preventative program that offers life skill classes, outings, family engagement activities, and support groups for youth ages 12 to 17. Our staff and students have been enjoying the 12 Days of Christmas holiday cheer sponsored by SGA, celebrating the various cultural holidays during the month of December. In recognition of the first day of Hanukkah, yesterday we wore blue, silver, and white along with having a cookie gift exchange. Today, we are celebrating huaiza by wearing green. Today, we are also delivering essential items to Dia Conia Shelter for those in need. A representative from Yale University met with a group of seniors this morning. Tonight, our band and chorus will present their winter concert. Snow Hill High School's Academy of Hunter is preparing for session two to begin on January 4th, when we return from break. We have exciting programs including drones, robots, engineering, and esports, in addition to our typical academic support and tutoring programs. On behalf of the administration, staff, and students of Snow Hill High School, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you, and now to McKenna Selby from Pokemoke High School.
Thank you, Jay. Our community enjoyed watching so many performances by our band, chorus, and band front during the parade season, as well as performances in the auditorium. Our performing arts programs are strong at Pokemoke High School because of our excellent instructors, talented students, and supportive families. We are so grateful that our executive team, Board of Education members, and coordinators of instruction are so supportive of the arts. Last week, we had a lunch to celebrate over half of our seniors who have already completed their FAFSA. Our goal is that 100% of our senior class will complete their financial aid applications by the end of January in order to keep all post-secondary options open. We already have 80% of our senior class committed to a college, a trade, or to the military. By graduation, 100% of seniors will have a post-secondary plan for success. We recently held our first career café of this school year. Professionals from all major career areas came to speak with ninth and 10th grade students, as well as held open question-and answering sessions. Our 11th and 12th grade boomerang event will be held this spring. Professionals who graduated from Pokemoke High School will be highlighting their career field. It is powerful for students to see hometown graduates highlight their career paths. Our young men who are a part of Made Men, an initiative in partnership with UMS to support future leaders of color, were recognized at the university. It's important that all students see the field of education as a possible career choice and equal representation of skin tones in educational staff, as it is very important for many reasons. We will be administering MCAP and high school assessments during the month of January, as well as final exams at the end of the month. Worcester on Wheels has been going into the community at least twice a month to offer tutoring in math, English, and science, as well as holding advanced placement information sessions and tutoring. Our website is updated regularly, highlighting these opportunities. We are looking forward to meeting with parents during community try time on Wednesday, January 11th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. We will be providing hot food and inviting community partners to join us as well, providing information to families on all available community resources. This is also an opportunity for families to conference with teachers. Pokemoke High School, Pokemoke Middle School, and Pokemoke Elementary School students and staff are grateful for the continued support of our Board of Education and executive team. And now, until all review.
Thank you, McKenna. It's the season for giving, and Stephen Decatur High School has answered the call. Throughout November and December, many of our extracurricular organizations joined in on the festive spirit. First, our Student Government Association sponsored a food drive for Dia Conia and collected over 1,000 pounds of canned goods. The NJRTC program sponsored its annual Toys for Tots Drive. The Fellowship of Christian Athletes helped a local resident by building an exterior ramp for their home. Key Club members sponsored a card writing campaign for the elderly. The Key Club and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes partnered with Salvation Army to ring the bell in our community, and members of Connections loaded several trucks with toiletries to be packaged for our troops. Our Surf Rider Club partnered with Restore the Shore and the After School Academy Art Club in an anti-littering sign campaign. Members of our National Honor Society, ROKAPA Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society worked with Worcester Gold and adopted three needy families for the holidays. Additionally, members of the National Honor Society volunteered for events within both the Ocean Pines and Ocean City Recreation Departments. Lastly, the National Honor Society donated $1,000 to Believe in Tomorrow, and Mu Alpha Theta donated $1,100 to the American Childhood Cancer Organization after fundraising in the fall. Meanwhile, life has been busy with our co-curricular programs, as well as the fall session of the After School Academy, wrapping up with over 300 participants. The annual Children's Theater performed for over 5,000 children and adults from across Delmarva. Members of our band, Color Guard, show choir, and NJRTC performed well throughout the parade season, taking home the grand champion from the Pokemoke Parade and placing in other events. In the wide world of sports, we would like to congratulate our fall sports programs on great seasons, including our Bayside Champion Men's Soccer Team, our Bayside and District Champion Golf Team, and our football team for making the state final four for the first time in 16 years. Finally, our winter sports teams are off to a great start, with nearly 250 winter athletes participating in 13 different sports teams. The end of the semester promises to be equally as busy as counselors assist seniors with their post-high school plans and prepare underclassmen for scheduling and course mapping. We are also in the midst of administering nearly 1,000 state assessments in HS MISA, HS Government, and MCAP. In closing, we'd like to wish everyone a safe, relaxing, happy, and well-deserved holiday break. May 2023 bring us peace and success in everything that we do. Thank you. Back to you, Ms. McComas.
Thank you all. It is so impressive. Have a wonderful holiday. Now, moving on to recognizing audience members joining us today from the following organizations: WCTA. WCESPA. Worcester County Retired School Personnel. Any representatives from various schools. Thank you for, Beth, for being here. Let's move on then to student, staff, and community recognition. Ms. Tamara Mills?
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So, I'm Tamara Mills, as I mentioned, the Fine and Performing Arts Coordinator. Thank you so much for being here today, and thank you to the board for your support of this each year. This is, we're going to recognize some students today for the holiday card contest. This year, the theme was merry and bright. We try to pick a theme that can be easily incorporated or naturally incorporated with our art curriculum, so encourage the students for this one to use bright colors and to use depictions of things that are fun and positive and happy. So, we do different categories. Today, the student will get a framed, their card back framed. They'll get a set of their cards that family can give to loved ones, and they get a gift card. So, we, again, we thank you all for the support of this each year. For our K to 2 division, Ms., I'm actually going to introduce the art teacher as well and come up and have them say a few words. So, Mrs. Sullivan is the art teacher at Snow Hill Elementary, and she's going to say just a few words about our winner, first, sorry, kindergartner, Ms. Brynlee Pruitt.
Thank you very much. This is my outstanding artist, Brynlee Pruitt. We looked at a lot of different artists that gave us ideas that filled their shapes with colors, and we used temper sticks. And do you remember what it was? Where is it? Where is it? Oh, there it is. What's your favorite color? Pink. We thought it was very merry and bright. Good job, girlfriend. Thank you.
Mom, you can come up and get a picture, too.
Congratulations. So, for our grades 3 to 5 division, I'm going to ask Ms. Adama Diaputch if she will join us from Pokemoke Elementary, and she is going to bring up her amazing artist, Ms. Jordan Harmon. She has a beautiful mixed media design here.
Hi, everybody. This is Jordan Harmon. She's in third grade at Pokemoke Elementary School, and she is one of our fabulous artists. She is a very hard worker, and I've had the pleasure of watching her grow over the years, and it's a great honor to see that she is getting this award today. So, congratulations, Jordan.
Want to hold your artwork? Congratulations. Our 6th through 8th grade winner this year, I will bring Ms. Heather Reiser. She is one of the two art teachers at Berlin Intermediate School, and she's going to bring up Ms. Harper Schramm.
So, PIS, we only have our students for fifth and sixth grade, and I got to have her for both years, but I also have her for reading enrichment and art, and this is where we did our watercolor, so we got to read about different artists, and she is always merry and bright. She's always happy, she's always willing to try new things, and she did a beautiful job. We did watercolor and salt and Saran Wrap, and tried all kinds of techniques, and hers turned out beautiful.
Yeah, I think one of the things that voters loved about this one is it's hard to see from there, but she used the merry and bright sheet music from Christmas, from Christmas songs. Very creative. Symmetry, symmetry. For our high school division this year, Ms. Forrester is the art teacher at Snow Hill High School, but unfortunately had surgery and has been out for quite some time. But she asked me to say a couple of words about Maggie. Why don't you come on up? Maggie Harris Blackburn. And I want to just kind of say that she, first of all, is not the first time she's been up here as a winner for various art contests. She's incredibly talented. One of the things that Ms. Forrester said is how unique she is, and her work is always very original. She's not taking ideas from other places. It's all very creative. She likes to try new things, which sometimes for teenagers can be a little scary, right? But trying new techniques and new materials and new subject matter, and she said that Maggie's just an all-around awesome young lady. So, I'm going to show you her work here. It is a watercolor. Beautifully done. All right, so why don't you go ahead, and I will show the board. You hold that. Actually, we'll show the board in a minute. Why don't you go ahead, and we'll get your picture. Dr. Purvis?
Congratulations, Maggie. No less significant, Maggie just got her driver's license.
All right, and our last category, we have always had sort of an overall design winner. This year, we decided to change it up a little bit, and from this point forward, we're going to have a superintendent's choice category. So, this year, Ms. Mary Beth Lantman, who is the art teacher at Cedar Chapel, will come up, and she'll bring Ms. Felicity Hatfield with her to talk about Felicity and the one that was chosen by Mr. Taylor.
So, I am very lucky in that I don't have my students for short periods of time, I have them the whole time they're at Cedar Chapel. So, I've had Felicity since elementary school, and she is an art teacher's dream. You give her an assignment, and she takes it and puts her own spin on it. So, great job, Felicity.
And if you're wondering why Ms. beautiful Felicity looks familiar, you'll see a wonderful photograph of her on the wall over there. Congratulations to all of our winners today. I also want to thank our art teachers. They are amazing at trying to encourage the students, not only for things like this, like contests, but also constantly encouraging the creativity, and I want to thank Mr. Taylor and our reps today for really talking about the impact of the arts on our students. It's imperative, and we're, I'm blessed to work in a county that really supports the arts and knows how important they are. So, thank you guys very much.
Next, I think we have Worcester Technical High School. Mr. Zimmer, I'm going to have you come up and introduce your team of folks today. Mr. Zimmer, I'm going to have you come up and introduce your team of folks today.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Rick Stevens, who's in charge of our Skills USA. Students recognized today are from our Fall Conference that took place in Ocean City. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. We went to, this is our, we finally went back to Skills USA. Sure, I got you.
Mr. Zimmer, teaching at Worcester Tech must be dangerous. The band all bound up.
One of life's lessons.
I got you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. As Mr. Zimmer said, this is our Fall Conference group. Finally, we were back live this year. We read the Carousel November 3rd and 4th. These are our elected officers for Skills USA, our AM and PM officers. We take them to the Carousel. We had about 385 students from across Maryland come down for the Fall Conference. This teaches them how to do their office duties and how to be involved in the community. Hopefully, they'll be setting up here one day, and we'll be coming in here and being recognized in front of them. So we appreciate you letting us come. We have quite a few absent, but I'll let you know when we get. So we want to start out with the Advanced Statesman Award, Ashley Cameron Diah. She's by herself. Yep. All right, Statesman Award, we'll start out with Amala Meehan. This is the whole group. Raquel A. Duffy. Ava Rector. The other five are not here. All right, so then we're going to go with Patrick Hayne. No, they're all together. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Riley Jones. Sandra Aldana Amargru. Thank you. Taya Price. Adelaide Weber. Jacob Payne. Joseph Peliquin. I'll try. And Vanessa?
Francisco Pitasia.
All right, guys, we got.
We're going to do two rows tall in the back, please. You know who you are.
I got it.
Might be some pants back there.
Real quick, before we leave, we want to thank you all for having us here and what you do for this school system. It's awesome what you all do. We thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Obviously, Mr. Zimmer, administration, and these two young ladies up here are putting to a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Great job. Great job, Mr. Stevens. Keep up good work.
I'm sorry, that's just, that's why we're here. That is just fun. I love it. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to our individual delegate comments. All individuals who sign up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one to two minutes. Regarding information, commendations, or concerns which may need future board attention, concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed in open session and should be directed to appropriate district personnel for investigation. When you're called to address the board, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, first is Danielle Bailey.
Okay, Shana.
Okay, Susan Ostrowski.
You're not, okay.
Okay. So we have, all right. This is fine. Moving on. Let's go on to curriculum and instruction report, and Dr. Nettles.
Good afternoon. Now's my favorite part of the program because we're going to be talking about math, which is my favorite. So I'm so excited to bring up Ms. Kirsten Dana Savage, who is going to introduce her fantastic mathematicians that she's brought here today. And I know everyone else is a lover of math out there, so we're all most pumped for this one. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Dana Savage.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Kirsten Dana Savage, the coordinator of instruction for mathematics, and I have with me today two of my fantastic instructional math coaches, Sarah Pryor, who works with our teachers at Snow Hill Middle School, and Sarah Blackburn, who is our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade coach, and she works at all of our schools in our county that service 7th and 8th grade, and she also goes to Berlin Intermediate School as well. Today, we are going to tell you about our new math program that we are using in K to 6, and we're going to tell you all about why the teachers selected iReady Classroom for mathematics, and we're going to share with you how our first year is going. But first, I'm going to share a little bit of data. As we know, COVID had great impacts on our student data, and the graph here shows the past four years excluding the school year 2021, and it shows us, in the green, are our students who are performing on grade level. Yellow indicates students who are one year behind, and red is indicating our students who are two or more grade levels below. And of course, we did suffer from the pandemic, and prior to the pandemic, we had 28% of our students on grade level, and our green area reduced by three percentage points, so 3% of our students dropped down. And we also currently have 26% of our students in Tier 3 compared with 22% prior to the pandemic, which is an increase of four percentage points in the red. It sounds very grim, however, nationally, most school systems really and truly dropped about seven to nine percentage points according to different studies. So we're not happy, but we're going to recover, and part of our recovery is our new math program. When we started to review different math programs last year, the teachers came to me and they said, Kirsten, we really want to look at iReady Classroom. We already know the iReady program because we've been giving the assessment for years. And it wasn't the program that the coaches and I really wanted, but we looked at it, and our teachers are actually really, really smart, and they know what our kids need. And when we dug deeper into it, we found that iReady Classroom was rated as one of the very highest rated math programs for K to 6. And you'll see, across all of their ratings, they are at almost a near-perfect score according to ed reports. So we do believe that using a highly rated, evidence-based program is going to help us fill those learning gaps, and then in January, we're going to have better scores to share with you. So moving into a new program, it all begins with teacher professional development. The coaches and I started rolling out professional development in July and in August, and we've continued every single month this school year. Each coach is assigned to a different grade level, and they have become an iReady specialist for that grade level, and they meet with our teachers across the county prior to each unit, and they help the teachers unpack the mathematics and really look and see what misconceptions are they going to need to be looking for, and also how to fill learning gaps. For the past seven years, we have been using main lesson, menu lesson, and we are so thankful that we have this instructional framework because it provides us the basis to help fill the learning gaps. Every student gets on-grade level instruction during main lesson, and then during menu lesson, the students get exactly what they need. It might be remediation, or it could even be enrichment. And now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Pryor.
Hi. When planning for a unit, the teachers review a prerequisite report that identifies which students are on target and which students may need a little extra support for success during the unit. Conveniently, the activities that are used to support the students are linked directly above each group. The teachers use this report to help make instructional decisions to best suit their students' needs. At times, teachers may decide to do a below-level mini lesson to whole group as it leads into their main lesson. Other times, they may use this information to work with students during small group or for small group instruction or individualized instruction during menu. For their students that are on target, iReady also offers quite a variety of activities that, for enrichment, that the teachers can use for enrichment. So as we are coming out of the pandemic and recovering, we know that filling the learning gaps is incredibly important, and it's been made much easier by using the resources that are provided in the iReady platform. The lessons that are used are the Try, Discuss, and Connect It routine. This routine is structured in a way that activates students' prior knowledge, and then it systematically builds upon that. Brain science tells us that students best learn when they're able to make connections with their learning and that they are engaged in their lessons. I'm going to turn it over.
So prior to assigning a problem to the students, the teachers anticipate what the students might answer. So they're going to go through the problems themselves and think about, what are the students going to do, and how am I going to share the student thinking? Historically, teachers relied on student volunteers to share work, but with iReady, this has been replaced with more strategic sharing so that they can share more concrete to abstract representations. So the first step of the learning routine in iReady is called Try It, and it's just what you think it is. It's where a student, students individually, get to try the problem. So some students may use counters or manipulatives. Other students may draw pictures or write equations, and this is where they're activating their thinking. As students work, the teachers circulate to monitor and look for those anticipated responses. And once the students have tried it, they get to share their thinking with a partner. So what you're about to see is a Try It discussion happening in a 2nd grade classroom, and these students are learning about the value of dollars and cents. So that gives you an idea of the kind of discussions even our youngest learners are having with this new program. They're planning their thinking to each other and learning some new strategies. So the next part of the lesson is called the Discuss It, and during the Discuss It, the teacher engages the students in a whole group and in partner discussion. The teacher encourages students to use math vocabulary to describe the strategies that are being shared, and the students evaluate other students' responses and compare them to their own. During the whole class discussion, the teacher asks questions to uncover misconceptions, promote understanding, and reinforce vocabulary.
In the past, we just did I do, we do, you do. iReady does a really good job of activating the student schema and pulling in what they already know, and so our students are really being actively engaged in their lessons. And now that the students have activated their prior learning, the teacher strategically leads them into doing problems together as a whole class, and the students are now talking more like mathematicians than they ever have in the past because iReady really incorporates math language into each lesson. Our students are becoming critical thinkers who are able to apply and model while practicing their concepts. The students are really asking questions, and they want to know the how and the why of mathematics. I was in a class last week, and in the past, I would not see kids question their teachers very often because usually the teacher's, you know, the boss, and you just go along with whatever the teacher says. And the student raised their hand, and they said, I don't think you did it correctly because I didn't get the same answer. And so the teacher didn't say, oh, no, I'm correct. The teacher said, well, tell me, how did you do it? So the kid told him, told the teacher how he did it, and then the teacher looked at him and said, well, then, how did I do it differently than you did it, and how is our work the same? So the student sat there and like looked at his work, looked at her work, and then figured out that he had made a computation mistake. And so our students are really learning to evaluate their thinking and become better at problem solving.
The iReady platform has paper and pencil as well as digital assessments. The teachers love the instant
The teachers love the instant reports that are generated with the iReady platform. They use the data to make instructional adjustments to determine which activities or lessons need to be re-taught and to whom.
And if you look at the graph here, it's showing five problems that the teacher gave digitally. And so which problem is she going to need to go over immediately? Question five. And so right away, this teacher knows what they need to act on immediately. Whereas in the past, you'd be collecting papers and you might not act on that until the next day.
They can immediately pull them for the small group during Menu right then versus waiting.
I absolutely love the new iReady platform. This is my first year teaching.
You're teaching fourth? Okay. Okay. Here we have teacher.
She loves it.
Yes, she does. I would let her talk. Okay. We have Ms. Salvarella. She is a fourth-grade teacher at Snow Hill Middle School. And this is her first year with the fourth-grade curriculum. And she's expressing how much she has really enjoyed iReady.
And here she is telling us how much she loves it.
And how she uses it.
I absolutely love the new iReady platform. This is my first year teaching fourth-grade math. And I feel very confident, very successful. I have my teacher workbook that I use every day. It structures and guides my daily lessons. I love the online platform. So for me, I'm able to go in there, look at my progression, look at my unit planning. I love the assessment piece. So it grades it for us. We're allowed to customize it. It pulls immediate data, which then I can go back and look through detail by detail. And I can go through and look to see what kids need differentiation, what kids need small group. I love also To Ooh. The workbook and the online platform give us student misconceptions and so I can see where they're struggling for each question. I also do kid workbooks. These are great. The kids feel some sense of independence, but they also have ownership of their learning. Really, really wonderful. Also, vocabulary is a huge piece for us. The kids love that part. They love their discourse cards. And overall, this makes me feel, as a new fourth-grade teacher, very successful. I love it.
And that was totally unprompted. So she did that completely on the fly. We did not give her a script.
So as we are in our first year, we are continuing to build teacher capacity because even though we have a wonderful resource, a resource is only as good as the teacher using it. And so we thank you for your continued support as we progress through the adventure of iReady Classroom. And do you have any questions for us? I can't imagine why they did that.
I know why they gave me a mic that doesn't work. Two questions and a statement. One, does the iReady math curriculum align with state standards and curriculum?
It absolutely does. And the teachers are actually learning the standards better than they ever have before. At the beginning of every unit, there is a video by one of our favorite mathematicians, Graham Fletcher. And he takes them through the mathematics of the unit and breaks it down standard by standard so that the teachers really understand the rigor of the standards.
Thank you. The second question, in my prior life, one of our challenges was to make sure that we taught all the math that was necessary before the students sat and took, in those days, the MSA. So my question is, does the iReady curriculum meet the testing limits for the state testing? In other words, are we teaching everything that we need to teach before the students sit and take the test in March?
So honestly, I have gotten so much feedback about this. The platform is very aligned. It is very rigorous. Our prior resource that we used to use, the teachers felt like they constantly had to go somewhere else to pull in more rigorous questions. With iReady, the only complaint that I've had is it's really rigorous and it's really challenging our kids. And I look at the teacher and I'm like, that's not really a complaint. That's kind of like what we want to do to our kids. We want to challenge them.
Thank you. And the comment, I was at Buckingham Elementary School during American Education Week during a math lesson, an iReady math lesson. And I'm just so fortunate that I was paired with two students in the third grade who helped me solve the problem that we were given. So I commend you and I thank you for what you're doing. I look forward to the results that we're going to get. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I also wanted to make a comment. You were talking about the activate stage. And I teach, I adjunct at a college. And one of the things that I talk about in that course is the science of shrinking the amount of change you need to make when you learn something. So like when you feel like you're already on the path, how much quicker you get down the path versus feel like you're starting like 20 miles away from the finish line. So I just, I was fascinated to learn about that piece because it again connects with that science of learning. And also, I see this at home with Connor, who's in kindergarten. And it's interesting to watch this because I see him like grouping, like he has his coins, you know, and he's grouping his pennies together. And he's in kindergarten. So this idea of the cents-making of like five pennies make, you know, one nickel and how they were doing their grouping. Kids are coming home and doing math. And it's probably not because his aunt is a math teacher. But it's, this is so powerful. And I want to thank you. Our coaches are a huge part of the work that gets done. Kirsten, credit to you for hiring two very bright people. And thank the two of you for working with our teachers because better teachers allow our students to learn more. And so thank you for all your leadership. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we use manipulatives?
Absolutely.
K through six?
K through six.
I love it. Okay.
Yep. And even in algebra, they use algebra tiles. Yep. So when I tell the teachers that when I come in their classroom, I don't want to see the manipulatives on the shelves. I want them at the kids' fingertips because our most struggling learner is not going to get up and walk across the room to get a manipulative. And the neat thing about iReady is when they're doing their work, the Try It page tells the teacher exactly what manipulatives to have out. And in the classroom that I was in yesterday, the kids were like looking at the little list of manipulatives that they could get out before they reached into their bin.
I love it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you so much for letting us share with you how we're doing in math, K-6. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Ms. Freestat, who is going to bring up her wonderful colleague. And they are going to share with us this morning their tourism project that they partnered with the city of Pokemoke on. So I'll let Ms. Freestat introduce her friend. And Ms. Freestat's bringing some manipulatives, which I know Ms. McComas loves. So hopefully the manipulatives will be part of the presentation.
It's the science teacher in me. There you go.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to come and present today. I know everyone is busy. But this is such an amazing project that we wanted to share with you. This is Mrs. Jennifer Beach. She is our media specialist. And she is also our four, five, and sixth-grade gifted and talented teacher. And our presentation, I'm glad we are on the heels of iReady because we use iReady reading to make a lot of decisions in our school based on that data because it is really good data. Math is an amazing program. And the data that we get from the iReady reading allows us to group students based on their needs in a 45-minute intervention block each day. We call it RISE. So Mrs. Beach has a fourth-grade group and a fifth-grade group because they are the enrichment students that need a little more extra, a little more above the tier one. We have other groups that need tier-three instruction, tier-two instruction. And then we have those students that need just reinforcement in tier one. And Mrs. Beach has those students that need that extra push. So she is going to share a project-based learning activity that she did with you. And I will show them to you as she shares them.
She did call herself my Vanna White. Thank you, Mrs. Freestat. I'm extremely excited to be here to share some really cool things that the kids at Pokemoke Middle School are doing. I'm lucky enough, like she said, to teach a brilliant group of fourth and fifth graders. And they see me every day for 45 minutes during our RISE time. And this year, one of my personal goals is to make our students more competent with the Apple-native apps, the apps that are on our iPads that Apple creates. And also some of the other apps that Worcester provides for us, such as Canva, which is an amazing resource. We began the year doing kind of projects about ourselves. We made little videos about ourselves, all about us, like little things in Keynote. And quickly, we moved on to looking outside of our own little bubble. And we looked at the town of Pokemoke. And my kids said, "Well, like, there's lots of cool things in Pokemoke." And I said, "Well, yeah." And they're like, "And we do have a lot of things for tourists to do." So we decided to do a project-based learning unit on Pokemoke and tourism. And we started researching, what kind of media do towns and cities use for their tourism? How to promote their tourism? And so quickly, we came up with a list of projects. And I'm going to have Carrie go to the first one. Actually, you can go to the next one. So the very first one they came up with were podcasts. And although I'm not very familiar with podcasts, our kids love podcasts. So we talked a little bit about what needed to be included in a podcast and what kind of apps we could use. So I went to GarageBand and that was the go-to app for us. However, when we started with podcasts, we started talking about the idea of app-smashing, which is where you combine a bunch of apps for your final product. So for our podcasts, my students used Canva to create their cover art. They used GarageBand to create their intro, outro music, and record their actual podcast. And then if you'll switch for me. Then we talked about more hands-on printable flyers and postcards that cities use. So we talked about flyers and using Canva to create flyers. And postcards and how we could create those in Canva, but we could also use Keynote. And then the last ones that we came up with were videos. So using clips and iMovie to create videos. All right. So my kids were super excited for me to come here and share this. And it was really hard for me to pick which ones I showed you. So if you'll switch, Carrie. Yep. This was kind of like our showcase. And what I forgot to mention was we wanted this to have a real-world connection. So when we started this, we invited the mayor and the city council to come see our project reveals. So this was kind of like our showcase. And if you'll click where it said, "There's two little boys," and it says happy, yeah, okay. So this is Silas and Robbie. They're fourth graders. Does that work if you click on it, Carrie? Oh, man. Can you press play? Does it still work?
How about you send them to us and we'll share them with the board members?
What if you click on that Pokemoke Top Five Family Places at the bottom? This is Renaya and Vianna, and they made a video. This is the same thing.
Isn't that great?
Mm-hmm.
Only when it works.
Okay, cool.
It's gorgeous.
Top five places for family fun in Pokemoke City.
The first place is the community garden. The community garden is a great place for fresh air.
She's the best, though. Nothing like giving you something to do on the fly.
Hi, my name is Renaya.
And I'm Vi. Me and Renaya will be sharing the top five places for family fun in Pokemoke City.
The first place is the community garden. The community garden is a great place for fresh air and to calm down.
That's right. You can also see memorial trees. There's also a fountain. And like Renaya said, it's a great place to relax. There's also tons of plants and beautiful flowers you can look at. We also have a sign-up slot where you can, you can look at all the details. Our next place is the Pokemoke River. The docks is a good place to fish and just have some fun.
It sure is. My dad fishes there. The dock is also a pretty good place to chill and just watch the water. The river is a good place to fish.
Number three on our list is on the Wyber Theater. It's Pokemoke's hometown theater and has shown many movies. It also is cost most of the time only $8.
Don't forget about Little Miss Pokemoke and Miss.
Yep. It also is really enjoyable. And it's also a one-room place.
Okay. Yep. Now on to Cypress Park. Cypress Park is a great place for children. The equipment is safe and fun. My five-year-old brother loves this park. Cypress Park is amazing. But we're going to move on to the Discovery Center.
Number one on family fun is the Discovery Center. There are multiple attractions. But one of the most popular ones is the Otter's Tuck and Back. They are quite the attraction. Also, they have a native people area where you can see the models of wolf's boats. And there's also models house where you can walk in. There's also a walk-in boat where you can see what boats used to look like.
Yep. This is, this is the end of our video. But you should come and visit Pokemoke sometime.
Yep. Have a great day. Also, we hope you visit Pokemoke Mail Land.
Yeah, they deserve that. They're so cute. And then, so those were kind of like the more digital projects that we had. But I had one student who, when we started this, she was like, "You know what I played was, I played a game called Eastern Shoreopoly." And she's like, "How cool would it be if we made a Pocoopoly?" So she made Pocoopoly. And at the beginning, we didn't realize what a labor-intensive project this was going to be. But so she made the board, she printed out all of the places, made how much they cost. But then we also had to make chance cards and community chess cards and property cards. So she did all of that in Canva. And then she also printed out houses and hotels and playing pieces on our 3D printer.
Houses?
Yep. So she told me the only thing she was missing was money and dice. And she stole that from her Monopoly game at home. So it was, it was a very unique idea. And I love that she thinks outside the box. And then the last kind of hands-on thing that I'm going to bring is one of the, one of the projects was postcards and flyers. And so I had a couple people, a couple kids. These are Ava made postcards about the Pokemoke River. And I love that they really look like postcards that you would go buy. She focused on the river and the activities in the river. And then Delmas is a fourth grader. And he, on his own, decided to put QR codes that link to the Pokemoke City webpage on the back of it. So yeah, it was a labor-intensive unit, but my kids loved it. And they loved the ability to be creative and choose their own path. And thanks for the opportunity to come brag on my kids for coming.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Jen, I just want to say thank you. Also, you're like really doing a good job because I know you've been working on public speaking and you get really nervous and you're really growing a lot. You're, don't forget, though, to visit. You have to visit our maker space before you leave because it's all coming together. And, but I'm so impressed with your project-based learning that you're doing because I saw English, I saw social studies, I saw communication, I saw mathematics. And when kids can make those connections between that, it's similar, Mr. Taylor, to what we saw when Mr. Scherdrue was here in a fourth-grade classroom at Shawl last week. And one of the things that we shared with him and talked about was that you can't fake things like this, you know? There's no dog and pony show. Like, this is really what kids are doing. It's authentic. It's what we love to see. And from a technology standpoint, I know Ms. Schwartz isn't here, but it warms my steers and eyes' hearts to know you are taking this and just, kids are having a wonderful time learning. Learning. So thank you. Yes, I'm sure. 3D printer technology, everything was there. And those games, are they for sale to board members afterwards? Small fee?
She was so excited and I was like, she needs to market this.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final presentation is Mr. Brian Phillips. And I want to give Brian a lot of props. And I wanna give Brian a lot of props and a lot of credit. He came in, this is his first year as a coordinator, and he took over a really big job. And Dr. Phillips and I sat down and had a long conversation, I think even maybe before he started in his role, about dreams that I had for him to accomplish. And I also said, like, I don't need you to do this by the end of the year. Like, these are big dreams. And so, I'm just so impressed. Brian came back to me and was like, I know these are what we talked about, but I'd like to add these things to my list. And he truly has continued to improve our professional learning. We were in a good place, but Brian is taking it into a whole new world, pardon the pun with his theme. So, nice job, Brian, so far, and I look forward to seeing your presentation.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm happy to be here, truly, to represent Worcester County Public Schools with professional learning. I'm a coordinator of instruction for CTE and world languages and other things, and professional learning is one of those things. So, this year, I have taken on professional learning, and I wanted to give it a whole, fresh, new look and feel, and bring it together in a whole new way. So, you'll see some changes from last year. Coming in, of course, I wanted to look at our professional learning from the district viewpoint, which is a new viewpoint for me. I've done professional learning in the past, but I wanted to bring that together district-wide so that it was in a nice, clear, succinct format. And the goal, of course, is to make sure that all of our professional learning is valuable. So, we've been using data to drive all of the decisions that we make with respect to all of our professional learning. And then, lastly, I wanted to make it look fun, too. So, you'll see the theme throughout in some of the things that we're doing with professional learning. So, the first thing that we decided to revamp was the professional learning calendar, and we embraced Apple technology to do that. We used Apple Numbers instead of Excel, just because all of our teachers and coordinators, everyone has Apple products now. And Apple Numbers was the format that played really nicely with all of the beautiful themes that we have, and I have Carrie and her team to thank for that, 'cause I'm not that great on Canva yet, yet. So, we've been using that for our monthly professional calendar, as well as for all of our professional learning days as well. It's all in the same format. And I think that consistency really helps our teachers. It helps people know what to expect each and every month, and for each of the professional learning days. So, that's a view of what it looks like. It's what everybody's using every month for all of our professional learning. And as you can see, all of the dates and the times, and anything you could wanna know about any of the professional learning is listed there, even whether substitute teachers are allowed to attend. A couple of other things that we changed, in addition to the calendar, was, one, the new teacher orientation. Dr. Wallace and I sat down and talked about creating a moment under new teacher, and that's what we strive to do. And we embrace the Disney scene, the theme, wholeheartedly with new teacher, and we continue to do so in the meetings that we have. So, we had a fun presentation. The one that you see here is Dr. McCouchell. She made all of our new teachers earn their ears there, and as you can see, all of them got to earn their ears. We also are using the Hiring Class PLC, which had been used in the past, and we're continuing that this year around the book, "I Wish My Teacher Knew." We're back to one-on-one mentors, which was new this year, and it's proven to be really worthwhile. The teachers seem to really enjoy that, and we've gotten really good feedback using 30-day goals as well. We're holding monthly PLC meetings at the schools with those one-on-one mentors, and they're all coming together in their groups, and they're working on lesson plans that we all have hosted in Microsoft Teams. Lastly, with Dr. Amy Mergonia and myself, we are doing 5D, pretty much intensified, meetings next door at Worcester Tech. So, we're gonna have five total 5D meetings, one meeting per dimension, and we've had really good luck with that as well. This, this new group of teachers that we have hired is just truly exquisite. I can't say enough good about them. One of the other things that we did this year was a substitute teacher workshop. Dr. Apt and I put that together, and we had nearly seventy substitute teachers attend. And we have gone over the professional learning calendar so that they, too, have access to our professional learning. We hope to run another one of those substitute teacher workshops in the spring. Lastly, one of the new initiatives that I've started with professional learning this year with the help of Ms. Diane Shorts and Mrs. Tamara Mills, has been Leadership Plus. This is a new initiative that we're doing for assistant principals who aspire to be principals. We are doing this out in the community. I can thank Dr. Wallace for that idea. She really pushed us to try something new, and it has proven to be really effective. We are seeking donations from restaurants, and thus far, we're three-for-three. We have hosted out at Dockside, which you can see on the top right, down in Pokemoke. Our last meeting was at Oaked 110 in Snow Hill on the bottom right. And then, coming up on February 1st, we'll be meeting at Fager's Fine Dining for our next rendition of Leadership Plus. It has proven to be really worthwhile for our assistant principals. And I know myself and our other two in the committee have learned a lot in all of that discussion. I look forward to continuing that. Looking forward, one of the things I wanna continue to do is reflect. I wanna reflect on all of the professional learning that we have going on, 'cause it's a lot. So, I wanna focus a little more on the feedback that we have coming in, and exactly how we can address that feedback. I also want to, next year, consider an aspiring leader group in addition to Leadership Plus, because although we have assistant principals aspiring to principals, we also have other people in classrooms and other roles across the county who may aspire to leadership roles as well. Carrie and I were actually just talking about just talent development. I would love to get some talent development running, so that, for example, Canva, that was one of the things we were talking about. It has so many uses in education, and it would be great if we could offer some professional learning around those things. Any questions for me about professional learning?
I wanna thank you, Brian. Go ahead.
Brian, I want to say, I know you work closer with Dr. Apt and Dr. Wallace, but I've had the opportunity to visit a couple of your events. And the professionalism and the dedication of you and some of your team is second to none. And I wanna let the board know how impressed I've been with several things that you're doing, both with professional development, but in particular with our assistant principals. I talk to them. As the board may or may not know, I do a, a school walk with every coordinator and every assistant principal, let alone meeting with principals on a regular basis. And Brian and I have, are gonna be spending some time to talk about some of the things that I see as a superintendent that we need to hone in on as we're working with our assistant principals who aspire to be principals. The principalship today is totally different than it was ten years ago when I sat in that chair. And it, it's gonna be different even ten years from now. So, we've gotta constantly prepare our leaders. We constantly prepare with a new teacher orientation, working with our teachers. If we're not ready to make some adjustments and change, we're gonna be left behind. And I, and I know this team here in Worcester County is not going to have our school system trailing behind anybody. So, Brian, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for taking on some of those daunting tasks that, that go unnoticed, because everybody's moving every day. And, and some of those things, to keep our, our folks up to, up to speed for the next generation of our kids, because we know we've got a lot of work to do, and, and we've gotta be ever-changing. And you exemplify that as you lead our group, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian.
Hey, Mr. Buchanan.
I'm gonna keep you up here a little bit longer. To, to look back on this, professional development days, I remember in the classroom, it was on specific days, specific half-days that kinda took us out of the classroom. And I remember at that time, you know, we were maybe not very, very enthusiastic about it, because we wanted to be in the classroom getting ready, you know, for another semester, whatever. But it appears to be that it's offered more than just on specific days. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so, for an example, once a week in the schools?
It all depends. It, it really depends on who the coordinator is and, and what the event is. What you saw up there is, a lot of that is after-school. It's what you saw is the monthly calendar, so they'll get, and I'm happy to share it with all of you guys, too, so that you can see each event, but there, there's a monthly calendar. And then, if Kirsten is gonna hold a math PD, one of her MOs is to offer three different times. So, it all depends on the individual session being run, whether it's after-school, whether it's during school, whether it's offered several times during the month.
Gotcha. Each school has a one-on-one mentor?
Yeah, so, so our new teachers, all of them have a one-on-one mentor style. So, every new teacher has one person that is, we ask building principals to choose, and we ask that to be a content specialist. Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wanna also add to the board that, you know, when I started teaching, again, Bill, way back when, it's, you know, teachers work ten months out of the year. Teachers don't work ten months out of the year anymore. I don't know a day this summer that I didn't walk in this building that there was not a PD going on. I also know, not only in this building, but they're also out in our schools with PD. So, the opportunities, and, and teachers don't have a choice to say they're not gonna be there, because in order to keep up with the new changing curricula that, you know, Kirsten talked about one today, they have to. And, and I'm grateful here in Worcester County that our, our teachers wanna learn and want to. Now, is it 100% no? But we have come so far, and, and so many things are happening, even during the summer months for our instructional folks, that it's just totally different than it used to be. And I get shocked when I walk in here on July the 8th and walk down, and we've got three different areas full of teachers and coordinators and things going on. But that's the great thing about Worcester County Public Schools.
And we have taken a, a really critical look. One of my goals when I started overseeing academics with Ms. Shorts was professional learning in general, because we had to do better as a school district in providing high-quality instruction, high-quality instruction for our teachers and support. Because like you were talking about, Mr. Buchanan, there wasn't always a positive feeling when it came to professional development, right? So, we have to, we had to take some responsibility, and that, that conversation has continued into Dr. Phillips's leadership as an organization, in the quality of professional development, the opportunities for it to be flexible. We prefer not to pull teachers out of their classrooms, because we know when you pull a teacher out of a classroom, the teacher now has to write lesson plans. We, we, we like, we train our subs, so we like for them to have a, a high-quality substitute. But sometimes the quality isn't as high as it might be if the teacher's there. So, we try to do, we do a little bit of professional development during the day, and we also do professional development in the evenings. And I'll take what Mr. Taylor said and take it even a step further. In the summertime, and, and the coordinators and Dr. Phillips, this building is full, Worcester Tech is full. We often have times where we don't even have spaces for professional, they like fight each other. I mean, in a good way, like sparring with each other, but we have so much professional development taking place that we don't have space for it, because our classrooms are being cleaned, and so wings are closed, and we've got summer academy. But our coordinators, as much credit as, as Dr. Phillips gets, all of our coordinators who are here also get that credit for really amping up the quality of professional development, so our teachers want to attend.
Yeah, because, you know, basically, you know, when you had limited professional development, classroom teachers were like islands unto themselves, you know? And so, we had no one to really talk to, to exchange ideas, or to, you know, come up with a different way of teaching the areas that we were teaching. And then, the crossover, for an example, you know, not all professional development was for our teachers, right? But we were included with other subject matters, which helped, I felt at that time, to give me a better understanding of how the system worked together, rather than the little kingdoms of academia, you know, around like that. So, thank you very much for what you do.
You're welcome.
And thank you so much for reinstituting one-on-one mentoring for our new teachers. For all my, all my educational career, that was the one thing that made the biggest difference in the world, is when our new teachers had a mentor.
And just so, just to be clear, we've always had new teacher mentors. We tried a different system the last couple of years by giving teachers more than one person that they could access within a building. Yes, so we, they always had at least one mentor in their building, but they would've had, it was just a little bit different structure. So, that is, like, the state of Maryland actually requires us to turn in what our mentoring, and mentoring has to be a piece of it. So, Brian fine-tuned it, because we had asked the person before him to seek out from principals what they liked the best, and what we found principals felt like was best, was not having a technology mentor, and a content mentor, and a something else. So, just, I didn't want anyone thinking we didn't have mentors.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And that concludes curriculum and instruction, so back to you, Mrs. McComas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, sir. We are, we are back to administrative operations, personnel exhibit, Dr. Apt.
Thank you, Ms. McComas. Good afternoon, board. I have your December personnel exhibit for your consideration. Our resignations for this month, Hannah Davis, Educational Assistant, Stephen Decatur Middle School. Giovanna Zaga, teacher, Buckingham Elementary School. Colleen Moskov, Educational Assistant, Snow Hill High School. Taylor Tedemary, Snow Hill Middle School. Jessica Visethorn, Educational Assistant, Ocean City Elementary School. Our new hires, Constance Bernal, Educational Assistant, Shawl Elementary School. Cindy Cook, Community School Liaison, Cedar Chapel Special School. Tekeisha Dennis, Community School Liaison, Pokemoke Middle School. Max Hart, Custodian Two, Shawl Elementary School. Diane Mayner, Cafeteria Manager, Ocean City Elementary School. Mark Thompson, Community School Liaison, Pokemoke Elementary School. Kelly White, Educational Assistant, Ocean City Elementary School. Leave of Absence, Julie Muller, teacher, Ocean City Elementary School. And Sunny Rathell, teacher at Shawl Elementary School. Superintendent recommends approval of the personnel exhibit as presented.
Okay, can I have a motion as presented?
Shall I move, Bill, board?
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, and pass it over to Dr. Wallace.
I am going to introduce Mr. Seitz.
Tom, make sure that the mic is on, please.
We good? Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Good afternoon. I wanna first thank the Board of Education members and the executive team for allowing me to speak today. This is primarily for informational purpose, or permission, and a reminder to the board of its policy and procedure on advertising. We have just concluded another fantastic fall sports season at Stephen Decatur High School. Our stadium is a focal point in the community on any given evening during the fall and spring with our students, faculty, parents, and community members. They're all out there supporting our Seahawks. Our facilities are top-notch in the conference and across the state. This is a direct result of the support from our Board of Education and our county commissioners. First, thank you for your continued support of our student athletes. Our current stadium scoreboard is eighteen years old. Actually, Mr. Zimmer told me he thinks it's older than that, Mr. Taylor. I'm not sure. We could go back and count it up?
It's older than eighteen.
I think you're right. And it's in need of repair. I'm here today to let you know that Stephen Decatur High School will be moving forward to obtain private community funding to allow us to purchase a new Daktronics LED scoreboard. We are not asking for any funds through our school budget from the Board of Education, nor from our school income. This new scoreboard will be fully funded by four anchor sponsors on display, as well as a scrolling bar. Currently, we have one past anchor sponsor, which is Coca-Cola, that currently sits on our, our scoreboard. This new scoreboard will enhance the experience in our stadium for our athletes, as well as our spectators. The technology included in this new scoreboard is truly incredible, and everyone will benefit from this enhanced visual display. After I, as principal for Stephen Decatur High School, approve the advertising, the proposal will be forwarded to the superintendent of schools for approval with Board of Education consent consistent with board policy. Once again, I wanna thank you, the Board of Education members and the executive team, for allowing me to speak today. And if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Tom, I have a comment. Thank you for, as you know, it's, it's very difficult during budget time to, to raise or ask our local government for those types of items. Not that we couldn't do that, but I, I wanna thank you professionally, thank you for going out and seeking help in the community and seeking donations to make this happen. Our kids will have the opportunity to have a nicer scoreboard, and certainly, I hope, my, my dream is that in, in the other two high schools where we have scoreboards, they are, both of them are newer than Stephen Decatur's, will have the opportunity to get a summer scoreboard down the road. So, this will be a great start for us in the county. And again, I appreciate your hard work and your team's hard work to make this a reality, should that be possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Seitz, I just have one question for you. Do you, do you plan to have this scoreboard ready for next fall?
I would love to have it up, installed, and ready to go for the fall. I would love to have it up, installed, and ready to go for the fall sports season. This new technology, we were able to at least take a look at it last year and it, it's truly spectacular, the things that we can do with it. We can preview other sports programs, we can have announcements for our children's theater. There are so many things we can do. We can support and talk about our academic team that competes in the Academic Bowl. It can cover our entire school activities and we're really excited about what it will do for everybody.
When we play in Wycomico County, they have one on their stadium, very similar. And it does enhance a lot of things, a lot of things that they can send out. And I catch myself a lot of times over there at athletic events, reading what they're scrolling through from time to time. So it is, it will be very nice for you to have.
It would be a nice addition to our already beautiful stadium that we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to Building Automation Systems Upgrades, Dr. App.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Sam Slakem to come up and present the Phase One of our Building Automation Systems upgrades.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are here today to request Board of Education approval for Phase One of the Worcester County Public Schools Building Automation Upgrades utilizing the Omni Partners contract awarded to Schneider Electric Incorporated. The cost of Phase One of the upgrades is $2 million. ESSER funding was approved to upgrade BAS systems countywide. The BAS system upgrades will improve indoor air quality, save energy, improve occupant comfort, and improve maintenance efficiency. The upgrades will be performed by Schneider Electric Incorporated. At this time, on behalf of the Superintendent, we recommend approval of the proposal by Schneider Electric utilizing the Omni Partners contract in the amount of $2 million for Phase One of the Worcester County Public Schools BAS upgrades.
Can I have a motion to approve the proposal by Schneider Electric?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. I'm sorry, question?
I do want to ask you, Mr. Slakem, the implementation of this process, what's the timeframe for?
So we are obligated under the rules of the ESSER funds to have them completely spent and unencumbered by the end of 2024. The process will begin almost immediately, should it be awarded, to start to enact these upgrades right away. So we target to have them done probably in about 18 months.
This is completely through our ESSER funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Follow-up question. Why were these specific schools selected?
So in Worcester County, we're very fortunate that we've got some new buildings, but some of our older facilities don't have fully functioning and operational building automation systems. We have four buildings currently that do not have fully functioning building automation systems. We're taking care of three of those. Funding didn't allow Stephen Decatur, our largest facility, to be able to be captured in this phase. With the additional funds that we have, we're doing some retro-commissioning on the buildings that we do have that do have fully operational controls to ensure that they're operating at peak efficiency and are tuned optimally. So the three buildings that we do have, that we are addressing with this proposal, Pokemoke Elementary School, Snow Hill Elementary School, and Burlin Intermediate will get full automation under this proposal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I apologize. I believe we have a motion. Do I have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, we're moving on to Stephen Decatur, Mr. Tolbert.
Yes, thank you, Ms. McComas. First up, we have a Stephen Decatur Middle School addition project update and request for acquisition number 13. We have Mr. Joe Price and Ms. Lindsay Hill. There's lots of stuff happening up at Stephen Decatur Middle School. Furniture's being moved in, and I believe Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, in a couple days, we're going to be demolishing these portables that have been, I swear, for a long time for us. Is that correct?
You are correct, Ms. Tolbert.
Thank you.
That is true.
Lindsay is here fresh off her successful completion of the 26 Mile Road Beach Marathon two weeks ago with update 13 and your acquisitions.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Still out of breath.
I, I am. I feel like my calves have finally healed. Okay, so in the last 30 days, we've completed quite a bit in the new addition. Ceiling grid, light fixtures, classroom casework was installed, toilet partitions, the flooring, the base, all of that was installed in the new addition. What we're currently working on are the finished sections. This is on the interior and exterior of the building. Final paint, ceiling tile, all the finishing touches. Outside the building, we're starting our final grading in the ponds since all the underground storm drainage has been completed and the grinder pump has been completed. So we're really moving towards our final inspections, fire marshal inspections, testing and balancing, and our punch lists have been completed by the architects and the engineers. So we're currently working with our contractors in completing those few items. In the next 30 days, we'll have the portables demoed. Teachers are moving in, boxes are being moved in, and hopefully we'll have an addition full of happy children.
Happy teachers, for sure.
Happy teachers. So the first photo, this is the decorative wood ceiling in one of the main corridors. We also have this in a conference room, the new D corridor. So these are the new lockers. Flooring, we did put protection down there for the move-in, but the flooring and the base have been installed and waxed in the classrooms. The new science lab, these are the tables and the casework installed in the main science labs. One of the typical classrooms, and this is after the waxing activities. This is the D wing corridor. Let's see, the final paint here. Storefront door installation, so we have one vestibule. Storefront has been completed and we are finishing up the second vestibule. This is the boys restroom. Toilet partitions and toilet accessories have been installed. The topsoil placement on the east side. Again, we're stabilizing this area, working our way around the building. I think that's it for photos.
Questions?
Enjoyed your Apple presentation and well done. I'm excited to be in the new building, so.
This is going to be cool.
Joe, I don't have a question, but I wanted the Board to know, I've toured it about two weeks ago, and how much that school looks identical some 22 years later, 23 years later, whatever it is? You can't tell, everything just is, looks just like the present school now. So thank you, Lindsay and Joe, for making that a reality. Even the outside brick, when you ride by, the only difference is the brick is newer, but it's all, the colors just matched right with our other school. It doesn't even look like an addition when you walk in through the school. So I thought that was pretty impressive and thank you for making that a reality.
The answer to the question is 25 years.
I just didn't want to rub it in, Dr. Andes.
That's the answer to the question, 25 years.
Superintendent recommends approval of acquisition number 13.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve?
John Andes, so moved.
Todd Ferrante, second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Lindsay.
Next up, Ms. McComas, we have Mr. Sam Slakem with a contract for the Board's consideration to do some roof repairs at Worcester Technical High School. Mr. Slakem?
Good afternoon, again. We're here today to request Board of Education approval for roof repairs to Worcester Technical High School using the Omni Partners contract awarded to Garland DBS Incorporated. The cost of this project is $100,000. Local funding was approved to provide the roof repairs for Worcester Technical High School. Roof repairs will reduce reactive expenditures and extend the service life of the facility. The upgrades will be performed by Garland DBA Incorporated. On behalf of the Superintendent, we recommend approval of the proposal by Garland DBS in the amount of $100,000 for the repairs to Worcester Tech.
Can I have a motion to approve the proposal for repairs to the roof?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam, for fixing the roof. We've been working on that for a while.
Next up, Ms. McComas, is every year we have an audit performed of our federal programs. This year, the audit was performed by UHY out of Salisbury, Maryland. They're certified public accountants. The Board has a copy of the audit in front of them. I'll take a couple of minutes to walk you through the highlights. The first few pages of the audit report are just standard audit reports stating our internal controls are good, we are in full compliance with all our grants. On pages nine through 11, it lists all our federal awards last year for FY '22. Our school system received approximately 87 different federal grant awards last year, totaling $13,991,128. Some of the major ones included Title I of $1,676,956, special ed grants of $1,674,706, some 21st Century Grants of $296,262, COVID-19-related grants of $5,428,174, and federal funds related to our school lunch program of $3,829,247. And if you continue to page on, back on page 13, you will see that there were no findings and no questioning costs, which means there was a clean audit. And when you have that much money flowing through the school system and there's many different grant awards that have that clean opinion, speaks very highly of our staff, especially Lian Terrace, our grants accountant, Amber, who is our contractual grants accountant, and Brian Cook, who also works in grants. So they're doing a phenomenal job, so. The Superintendent recommends approval of the audit as presented.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. I also want to add that Mr. Tolbert and his staff do an outstanding job, and I just want to say that you do it every year and you're very consistent. We appreciate all the hard work that goes into doing this. Thank you.
Check with Bill Boarding.
Thank you. All, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Thank you.
Madam President, I just wanted to comment so that everyone in our community understands the federal dollars are restricted dollars. That means whatever they're allocated for, that's, we must spend it for. We have no choice, we have absolutely no flexibility, and the federal government only provides about 6% of our total operating budget. So I think it's important for our community to understand that the federal government has significant oversight of what we do in public school systems on a daily basis. But in most cases, they only provide 6% of funding for what needs to be done to get things delivered, high-quality instructional programs for students. And all of those dollars from the federal government are targeted. And as other folks have said, Mr. Tolbert and his staff, and I don't know how they do it, track 87 different grants and comply with all those kinds of things. And plus, the audit, which you have the independent audit, but then every year MSD, who's responsible to make sure we spend those money correctly, sends a team down of inspectors to make sure we spend it correctly. So my point is, federal government gives us money, it's restricted, we can only spend it on certain things, we have no flexibility in it, and there's a significant amount of accountability on those federal dollars. And when you boil it down, it's only about 6% of our operating budget. So I want to echo what everyone else said, but I just thought it was important for our community to understand the nature of federal dollars and how they can be spent and the restrictions on those federal dollars. So again, to echo other people's comments, I commend Mr. Tolbert and his entire staff and everyone in the school system who makes sure that we're in compliance with all those federal regulations in terms of these dollars, to make sure. Because the other aspect is, if you're not in compliance, you have to pay the money back. And we never want to write a check back to the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Andes. Thank you, Todd. The last item, Ms. McComas, I have is a November financial report with total on-salar expenditures of $4,372,087.99. Superintendent recommends approval of the November financial report as presented.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve this financial report, monthly financial report?
John Andes, don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion pass. And thank you, Mr. Tolbert.
You're very welcome, Ms. McComas. Thank you. That concludes fiscal operations. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
And now I'd like to open up the floor to my fellow Board members in the event they have any comments.
I would just like to say to our entire community and especially our employees and Board of our school system, I thank you for all your work. And please, please, over the holiday time period, take time for your family. The one things I can recall about my Christmas and my family is my father was a Methodist minister and it was an extremely challenging time for him because he spent a lot of time doing ministerial stuff that are required during the holiday time period with church service and so forth and so on. And we would get lots of toys as kids. And I don't have any of those toys left, they're all gone. Now that I'm 68 years old, I don't have any of those toys. But what I do have is my memories. The most precious gift that we get from God is time. And I'm encouraging all of us over the holidays to use our time wisely and create memories. Yes, there has to be a toy someplace under a Christmas tree so that a child can open that. But my best memory of my childhood is sitting on my father's lap and having him read a story to me. So I'm encouraging all of us to take whatever time is necessary to create memories because memories live forever. Toys get broken, they end up in the landfill or someplace else, but memories last forever. So I encourage all of us over this holiday season to take time to create those memories so some really old, 68-year-old guy can reflect back on those memories and think about that precious time and precious memories that I had as a child growing up with my parents. So to all of us, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Andes. I'd also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday as well as a healthy and Happy New Year. I hope you have a terrific Christmas with your, with your family. But I'd like to recognize Mr. Nate Passwater, he could not be with us today. He had mandatory training for Chief Deputy of our county, so that's where he is, he can't be with us, but I do want to recognize him. Nate always put our students first. He was thoughtful and prudent in his decision-making, and I look forward to that continuity when Ms. Kate Addis accepts the newly elected position and will be with us here in January.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? We have one other report that I need to, sorry.
Thank you, I'm gonna, just, I just wanted to give the Board a brief update on safety and I, I'm going to talk with President McComas and Mr. Taylor about potentially adding it back onto our monthly agenda just to keep that focus. Mr. Steve Price and Dr. Dwayne Att did a wonderful job setting the stage and bringing our safety program to where it is today. And it is a very large task keeping our students and our staff safe every day. So I just wanted the Board to know that I am, I have taken in the comments that we've received at the last Board meeting and a couple Board meetings ago from a couple parents in our community around safety. And I am meeting, I have a meeting set up with that individual, and we're also putting together a larger safety committee so that it's a lot of great minds together, including Mr. Nate Passwater has, has agreed to stay on and help us with some of that work from our law enforcement. So we continue to focus on safety and we continue to learn and grow to make our schools safer for our kids and our adults every day. So I didn't, I wanted the Board to know that I did take those comments in and I did take good notes, and I'm following up with those individuals and some others that she mentioned. So I just wanted to keep everyone in the loop.
Thank you so much. And finally, I would just like to say thank you. This is my last meeting as President of the Board, and I thank my Board members for being there for me, particularly when I start my little OCD. being there for me, particularly when I start my little OCD and go off on a tangent. So I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate the fact that we have such a unique unified group. It has been an honor and a pleasure serving with you all. Now, I am still staying on the board, but I hope to be off to the side and not up front anymore. So I appreciate it. It's definitely been the best of times and the worst of times, so thank you all.
Ms. McComas, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for your leadership over the last two years. It has not been easy, to say the least. It's been extremely difficult, and you've done an outstanding job in leading us over these last two years, and we just appreciate what you've done, and we just want to thank you for it.
Well, thank you for being, being there also. I so appreciated it. It was...
And I would like to say I have number loving kisses for you.
I'm just leaving, guys. Anyway. So with that said, the next regular Worcester County Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, January seventeenth, 2023. In this room, and open session will begin at... Am I reading that right? Open session begins at eleven?
Yes, the first, yeah.
Sorry, right. Okay. To immediately consider voting to convene into closed. The board will reconvene at 12:30, as we always do, and this will be posted on the website, located under Board Meetings, Board Docs. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, a couple announcements and a couple comments. I wanted to remind our audience, our community, that, and congratulate and thank Ms. McComas because the board president has to work closely with the superintendent. And Elena was handed that position on the heels of a tragedy, as you all know, and I don't want to forget our former board member, Mr. Eric Cropper. And it was a call to her and said, "You're on," and that's, and she has done just an outstanding job in holding this thing together as we've moved forward when she first got into it. I also want to extend publicly my thanks to Nate Passwater. I get to work with Nate in two capacities, as a board member and also as, from the sheriff's office, quite a bit of work that we stay, we have a great working relationship with our law enforcement. So just, he's just a pure gentleman through and through, and very open to kids' needs and so forth. And I also want to welcome Katie. Next board meeting, Katie and three others will be sworn in. Even the ones that were re-elected have to be re-sworn in again, and so we look forward to Katie joining our board and being a part of this team here in Worcester County. I also wanted to share with the board and the audience that, and I think my executive team will tell you, we had an outstanding visit from our state superintendent. Whether we always agree with what the state says and wants us to do, that's immaterial, but the most important thing that Mr. Shodery said to me as I was walking him to our, with our cars were parked side by side at five o'clock that evening at show was, "You've got an outstanding school system here. You've got one that people would love to have throughout the state of Maryland." And he said, "Also, I'd like to maybe contact you and bring some of my staff from the State Department of Education to come down and observe your instructional strategies that you're using to teach young people." He said a lot of positive things during the day, he asked a lot of questions, but that was his parting words to me, and as we drove away, I just thought how powerful that is. But, and I said to him, "I will share that, because that's not about me. That's about what's happening every single day in our school system here in Worcester County." So that was a nice comment, that, comments that I wanted to share with our board and with our community as well. For announcements, as you know, we're getting ready to go into winter break, Christmas break. Our schools will be closed from December the twenty-second through December thirtieth. January the second, we reopen for everyone comes back on January the second, and on January the sixteenth, we will be closed on that Monday. It's a holiday for the Martin Luther King Day, so schools and offices will be closed on January the sixteenth. And last but not least, again, thank you, as Dr. Andes said, and other board members, thank you for all you do. Everyone out there who's watching and sitting here today, we couldn't do it without all of you. It's not about one, two, three, or four people. It's about the entire community coming together for the betterment of our kids, and as long as we keep kids in mind, we'll make great progress here in Worcester County. And last but not least, Merry Christmas. God bless each and every one of you, and have a great New Year. Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, thank you, Mr. Taylor. With that said, can I have a motion and second to adjourn this open session?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.